Okay, we'll go ahead and call this meeting of June 19th to order. And if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of Michigan and to the state for which it stands, two beautiful peninsulas united by a bridge and steel, where equal opportunity and justice for all is our ideal.
Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Minehart?
Here.
Mayor Felkins?
Here.
Okay, the first thing we have on our agenda is the approval of the agenda.
I'll make them, are there any changes? No? Then I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Can you speak louder? I can't hear way back here.
We'll do our best, absolutely. Sandy, could we have a?
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comment. If you do come forward, we ask that you please provide your name. And then if you would also write down your name and your address for the clerk, we would appreciate it. And if you would please keep your time, three minutes or less.
Good evening. My name is Chris Dronik and I am here on behalf of a group called Friends of Kenwood Disc Golf. As that group, a group of us put together a plan a few months ago, and we're carrying through with that plan, whether it be, it started as a park cleanup. We're gonna, with the city approval from Aldumon, we have benches that are gonna go in, new trash cans. Also, something that we're trying to do is really beautify the park. And with that comes what they call the Quonset Hut, which is an old rusty building, kinda dilapidated. There's, you know, refuse from the city, old docks, from that kinda stuff. Part of our idea and our plan was to open that up to local artists. Friends of Kenwood Disc Golf will go through, will clean up the area, and will power wash it. And within boundary, you know, no profanity, no anything like that, because it is a family course. We want our families to be able to go out there and enjoy the natural beauty of the course. And it will give Kenwood a step up from local parks that we do have in the area, whether it be disc golf or just a park in general. Kenwood is a great course. Absolutely great course. But it's more, it has more to offer than just disc golf. There's hiking trails, geocaching, just hanging out out there. And the, if we give local artists a venue, then we won't have, you know, I'm not gonna say we won't have, but hopefully it'll cut down on the, the post damage, the writing on the T-post, the tagging of trains maybe, something like that. So if we give these people a venue to be able to go out and express themselves and submit their artistic beauty, I think we'll notice a decline on that kinda stuff around the city. And on the course as well.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move on to the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on June 3rd. Excuse me, June 5th.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Councilmember Minehart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Mayor Felkins?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is to interview the candidates for the third ward council position that was just vacated by Matt Wolfisle. Marcus, would you like to explain the process to everyone?
Sure. Somewhat simple process. The city council is going to be asked by the city clerk to basically pick names out of a hat to establish the interviewing order. There are four candidates that you'll be interviewing tonight. There was a total of five applications received, four of which were received timely, one of which was not. The four interviews then were scheduled accordingly for this evening. During such time that the interviews are taking place, the other remaining candidates will be asked to kindly either wait in the adjacent conference room or in another area outside of these chambers. They'll then get brought back in accordingly when it's their turn for the interview. It's asked that city council hold any discussion on the candidates until after the four interviews have concluded, at which time it would be appropriate for the city council to discuss and make a determination. That determination would then be made via a motion to adopt a resolution that would then appoint one of the four candidates to the third ward council member seat. That person, at that point, would then be issued the oath of office by our city clerk and would take the seat and join the city council accordingly.
Okay.
So, at this point, unless there's any questions by the board, it would be appropriate for the city clerk to bring out the hat or the cup or whatever device you're using, a tray.
And so, we're gonna have each of them draw a number? And then?
Is it a number in there?
There's a number in there. And what we'll do is we'll have two, three, and four go to our conference room, which our staff will help get you back there. And then as we interview people, we'll put everybody back in the conference room and have some discussion.
Okay.
Come on up. So you must have number one? You have number four, okay. You can go with those gentlemen, thank you. And you must have number one. Okay, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself?
This is a interesting interview. My name is Robert Ingalls. I live in the historic district on the top of the hill.
Okay. All right, so what we'd like to do is to ask you some questions, if you wouldn't mind. We all read your application and we appreciate you stepping out and being willing to serve. So thank you for that. So if we wanna get started with the questions?
The city council regularly meets at 6:00 on the first and third Mondays of each month. The meetings last approximately one to three hours. Will your schedule permit your regular attendance at the scheduled meetings?
I'd like to, before I answer that, really quick. I know on my application, I had mentioned that I was not interested in running in the November election as a way to not give incumbency advantage to, you know, to that person, just kinda fill in and do a duty. I think as I've talked to people over the last week or two, that didn't quite seem practical anymore. I'm not quite sure if you guys were still interested in that. But I do intend, if appointed, to file by the deadline to run in November.
I'm glad you are addressing that because that was gonna be one of my questions when we got away from the questions that we have in front of us to ask every candidate.
And then, for the interim part here, I think there are 10 sessions, including the one tonight. Although Marcus said there might only be nine because you may not meet during one of those sessions.
The first week in July.
First week in July, yeah. I will be able to make all but the August 21st, Monday, the August 21st, meeting, everyone but that. And from that, yeah, I don't have a problem with the time either, from 6 to 8. Yeah, it's just the one August 21st date. So I'll be able to make eight out of the nine.
So generally speaking, do you envision any problems such as work-related matters that would prevent you from attending the regular monthly meetings?
No, I run and operate, own and manage, an insurance agency. We're very flexible. My wife works with me as well. I've had, I have had our first child in October, so I have an eight-month-old that has just started to sleep through the night and everything's starting to calm down very nicely. So I don't anticipate any problems. I run, I work a very flexible schedule. You know, my wife's very supportive, so I shouldn't have any problems.
Thank you.
Do we go in order?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. Does your interest in serving on city council stem from a personal interest or goal? And is there something in particular you hope to accomplish while serving on city council? And why is serving on council important to you? That's a lot of pieces.
Yes.
Please elaborate, Ben, it says. So do you have a, do you have a goal? What's your, what's your purpose? What brings you here?
Absolutely. Well, I actually have a degree in public administration, which I got about a decade ago from Saginaw Valley. And, you know, the interests I've had, I think, in public service and local government, you know, it always seems to have been there. My grandpa was a principal, he had served on the school board. You know, grandma was, keeps a very busy volunteer schedule. My dad works with rural water plants around the state to help them, you know, plan for their sewer systems and does a lot of rate presentation. So I have a lot of unusual conversations, our family conversations revolve around things, you know, such as public servants and, you know, good governance and even sewer rates sometimes. So I think as far as like my personal interest, it's always, it's, you know, it's always something I've been interested in. And plan on being an insurance agent, I'd actually started my master's program to continue my public administration degree when the insurance kinda fell upon me as a family insurance business. So it's never really anything that I stopped being interested in. I don't really have any goals for this, you know, for any goals or focuses for the city Cadillac. I have, in preparing for this meeting, you know, I had a short discussion with Marcus. I went over the budget, the current one, the 2017 one, the city goals and the key priorities and programs. And all these things, you know, are very wonderful. Marcus put together a budget that was very easy to read. There's, you know, there were some things that interested me more than others. The ISO ratings are actually interesting as an insurance agent. You know, those are something I understand, lowering the premiums. I definitely am interested, you know, in this just as a resident. You know, I moved here in 2008, which was an interesting time. Since then, you know, Baker College, the renovation, I get off the interstate and see the junction things. There's, there's a lot going on. So it, and we bought, we bought the house on the hill, it was a foreclosure. We plan on putting, you know, a lot of time, effort, and energy into, you know, that, being a part of the community and being part of the downtown and restoring an old house. And, you know, everything, everything's, you know, really exciting in Cadillac. I, the, I was talking to some council members over in Towas and they were telling me about what Cadillac was doing. They'd read about it in the municipal magazine. And they, Marcus, Marcus is in there, I think, sometimes. And the, what was it? The placemaking plan for the plaza, which I had reviewed on the website as well, got, you know, honors. Like I said, you know, that was a pretty amazing thing, so. I guess this is a good time to be a part of it. I like what I've seen in the last little bit. And I don't really have a focus or a mission or, you know, I'd rather, you know, be a part of the process. I think, you know, one of my local government philosophies is, you know, you have, you have a line between accountability and efficiency. And I think some of this, some of what you guys do here, if you can get one without sacrificing the other, you're gonna take that. But most of the time, it's a drive between the two and that's, there's a balance there. So I'm really interested in being a part of the process. And that, and, you know, accomplishing the goals you guys have here. I'm on board with the city council goals. And, you know, aside from the shared mission of, you know, this document here, I really don't have any other driving, driving force other than improving my community, so, thank you.
Thank you. At times, the city council must render decisions on policies or programs in the community that might be somewhat controversial. And so my question for you is, are you willing to take on the responsibility of making the decision that's in the best interest of the community or the public, even though they might be somewhat controversial?
Yes. Well, I do, as an insurance agent, I get people calling me a lot and they like to start out with the phrase "you people." And so I get, when, when I get those phone calls, I know that that's the type of thing that's gonna happen. So I am familiar with that. I do, you know, I think you should listen twice as much as you should speak. And, you know, respect for the people who show up at the meetings, respect for the people who get paid to work for the city, and then also respect for the people who sacrifice their time and energy to serve on, you know, on the council. I, you know, I, I have very, a quiet, quiet temper, I think. When things escalate, I like to not react. So I'm not easily provoked, not, I'm not very reactive. And, you know, I don't mind taking responsibility and heat for something that seems like the right decision. I think there, you know, there are some uneasy feelings that go along with not everybody being happy, especially when you can't make everybody happy. But if you follow the process or if you've done things in a certain way, then that's, you know, then you should be able to live with the result regardless. See, I don't have a problem making controversial decisions. I, you know, my business decisions fall, you know, on me. I discuss it with my wife and then, you know, that's it. So those types of things are very much in a vacuum as well, where it's up to me and no one else. So I'm used to that, the decisions dealing with the people who may not be happy, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If you could make one change or improvement that would, improvement, what would that change or improvement be?
A change or improvement in the city Cadillac as I see it or the, you know, the city government, like?
I think just in general. Based on what you know is going on around the community and, and as you've given this position some thought, you know, is there something that you see you'd like to change?
My overall impressions, as I've been preparing for this, are more supportive than suggestive. Like ideas aren't necessarily occurring to me as I'm going through your documents, as I'm going through the community, the improvements that need to be made, you know, I see being made. I think to, you know, as you, when you were running for councilperson, as you ran around and knocked on doors to talk to people, I think, you know, that's how, you know, I, as I talk to people, I think I'd get a mission or a sense of improvement. But, you know, I don't really see anything myself. Like I said, I'd really like to be a part of the process and make this work better, so.
I know you answered this on your application, but I'll ask it again publicly. It's related to conflict of interests. Do you have any interest in or participate in any professional or personal activity that could lead to or be perceived as a conflict of interest if you become appointed? And if so, please explain.
I do not, our business is in Herring Township. We do have a house in the historic district that we're renovating. My wife's on the historic board. But if anything specifically raised or related to a historic rule change, I guess that would be the only specific thing where my interests would coincide with a broader interest, really.
Thank you.
I think he answered six already.
Is it, well, I'll give you another, another shot at it. Other, you really told us a lot about your activities and interests that, and specialized skills and experience that would contribute to your effectiveness. I think you answered that up top. But if there was anything else that you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, the one thing I didn't mention too, I, so I moved to the Cadillac area in 2008 and then we bought our home in the historic district in 2013. And then, you know, the year after, I got on the Wexford Planning Commission and the ZBA. And being on the ZBA has been wonderful. Mike Coys, you know, makes everything very, very easy. Being on the Wexford Planning Commission, my first meeting was the public, public solicitation of input for them ending the zoning for the county. So that was, that was a very interesting experience. That was an interesting year there. That was my first experience as well. So there was a lot to take away from that, more than I could go into at this point. But, you know, those, those were first experiences where now I feel like I'm past that. So, you know, the, and then my insurance, insurance office, customer service billing, technology. You know, being a small business owner, I do a little bit of everything. Yeah, so that's, that's it, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. The question that I have for you is, I'm wondering if, if you could explain to us why we should appoint you to the council? And also, if you could think about the fact that just a year and a half ago, we had a public, a public vote for this seat. And so, you didn't run in that last election. So what's changed between the last election and now that would cause you to come before us for consideration?
Absolutely. Well, I, you know, I'm at a point in my life where I, you know, I have to, I have to consider that. I'm still at a very young point in my life, I feel like. So it's like, these opportunities haven't, haven't escaped me. But when I initially submitted my application to you, as my cover letter indicated, I wasn't necessarily looking to, I was looking to fill a different, a different role. Like I said, fill in the interim spot, the 10-week spot. And that's still what I'm looking to do now. But as this opportunity presents itself, just like all windows that open, like, this is the chance I'm taking. Like, this was enough of an opportunity. I, you know, sitting there in that seat might be, you know, the experience I need to not wanna do it anymore. You know, I'm not, I'm not 100%. So it's young, I mean, it's an experience. It's definitely something new for me, so. What was the other part of the question there?
I think you answered it.
Okay.
Why should we appoint you?
Well, why should we appoint you?
Yes, oh, yes.
Was the left part of it, I guess.
Um, what, you know, I'm excited about the city. I'm excited about the city manager. I think you guys do wonderful, wonderful things. It'd be, it'd be exciting to be a part of it. So I, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys, so.
Okay. I also have a question that isn't on here. But are you part of the local Cadillac Young Professional Group?
I'm not part of the, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any more questions?
I do.
Of course you do.
This question is related to teamwork. Do you think teamwork is important as a council member? And if so, how would you contribute to that team?
Absolutely, I think so. When I'm, my philosophy in insurance is employee-based instead of customer-based. Like, I have 2,500 customers, which I can lose one. I have four employees. And if one of those people, one of the people that were part of my team left, you know, they're irreplaceable, they're what I'm here for. So in my teamwork setting, where I'm in charge of a team, you know, it is the most important thing and they are the most important people. I think, you know, when it comes to this type of setting, the respectfulness between people who dedicate their time and energy to do this is part of, you know, a shared, you know, shared experience for other people who sacrifice. So I know what you guys do, I know how many hours you guys spend and how much easier it would be to do something else. So, you know, mutual respect and that fostering of teamwork is, you know, it starts with respect, I think, and the teamwork would build from there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are you, do you go by Robert or Rob or Bob?
I go by Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you. Am I all set?
Bruce will help you get back to the conference room. Thank you.
Who's number two?
I don't know.
It's gonna be a big surprise.
It's not gonna be Jason.
It's the evening.
He said he was.
He was four.
He was four.
Are you gonna ask, are you gonna ask the teamwork?
What's that?
We didn't allow Chris a chair tonight, or what?
Oh, yeah, you can sit up there if you want.
You can sit up on the chair. Hi.
Hello.
Um, do you wanna go ahead and introduce yourself?
Yeah, I didn't know if you had a specific questions or not, but.
We, we will, we will.
My name is Art Stevens. I'm sure some of you took some Pepto Bismol after seeing my name show up on that list. But I, for the public as well, is, you know, I did serve in this seat for the 16 years. And through probably the questions, I'll kinda run through kind of a plan that I have in terms of how I can help the city out through this positions, through the appointment.
Okay, we'll go through our questions. Thank you.
Do you want me to say it again?
Sure.
A lot of these are, you answered on your application, but for the benefit of the public, we'll go ahead and ask them. The city council regularly meets at 6:00 PM on the first and third Mondays of each month. The meetings last approximately one to three hours. Will your schedule permit your regular attendance at scheduled meetings? And do you envision any problems such as work-related matters that would prevent you from attending on a regular basis?
The one advantage of serving in the spot you have is understanding the role of it and the time commitment. And there's absolutely no concern with that. I, as many of you feel, when you take that role on, you're gonna serve. And also understand that there's time at meetings, but a lot of extra time is serving the citizens through phone calls or issues or committees and such like that. So I absolutely do understand that and I know in my schedule, as many of you know, but for the public, I do financial advising with investments and insurance. That's one advantage of being a, your own owner, is that you can schedule your time accordingly. And I'm definitely one of those examples of, when you work commission-based, sometimes you understand the role of the city and sometimes that affects it. But when you take that responsibility, you have to take the time and do it. So yes, I do understand the time commitment. So yes, I do understand the time commitment.
Okay. Hi.
Hello.
So, um, does your interest in serving on the city council stem from a personal interest or goal? And is there something in particular you hope to accomplish while serving on the city council? And why is serving on the council important to you? Please elaborate.
Thank you, and that, that's probably where part of, I wanted to make sure I could pass on one piece of information. This sounds like the question to do it. But, um, one thing it, it is, and I understand that, that's a concern sometimes when people have a personal interest, maybe on an item, and not the overall interest of the community. I'm coming here with a, a little unique offer, um, of understanding, to me, an interest that I have is the importance of the public being able to decide who serves the city council. And, um, having it in a situation where, through the election process. And where it's a, it's a fair election that allows everybody the even playing field. Where no advantage, or maybe a perceived advantage, where you're put in a position to appoint someone, they may have an advantage because they, they can say that they are a incumbent. Ironically, sometimes that could serve as a disadvantage, which may have happened in the last election, when you're now put in, on the spot and you have to make some votes. And, uh, now all of a sudden, there's people upset at the way you vote. So, the interest I have is, is mainly to serve this community. I wanna, it's important to me to see this process where it's a fair for the candidates that run. I also truly believe in my heart that the candidates that have to run for election and you get out in front of the public and you understand that's who you're serving, is the citizens, that's the way to do it. When you're appointed or maybe when you, it's not the same when you're appointed or when you run unopposed, because once you start having, which now everybody sitting at this table has had a, election where you're opposed, you understand there's a difference. So my way, you ask about what my interest of doing this is, is I simply wanna fill this void until the November election. Tonight, um, my intentions are if, if I get appointed tonight, that I wouldn't be running for this position in November. Because I feel that it is an important opportunity to allow people to run and have it be fairly. I also understand, looking at this agenda tonight, um, how difficult it is to get all of a sudden thrown in to an agenda. When you're, your first meetings, when you have them, you don't have an idea what's going on as much. I'd be able to step right in, 'cause I've been here for sixteen years. I know the process, I know the language, I know what an I F T is. I know what a special assessment is, I know what that means to the citizens. I'd be able to step in right today and fill that void until November. Interesting point too is, um, I also understand that the need is right away being able to help the citizens if they call or they need to have representation. So, I know it seems crazy, but for four or five months, they could say, well, it's one person sitting only for four months, but it's when people come, like tonight, on a special assessment request or an I F T. That's a pretty large one for our community. That's important to them, they have people that are serving on there and have an understanding. So hopefully that answered your question.
Thank you.
Did I hear you right? Did you say you're not planning on running for reelection in November?
Well, kinda, uh, it's not reelection, 'cause I did, but I wouldn't be running. If I'm appointed, I, my intention is to not run for this position in November. That way it gives you an opportunity to, um, not be in a position where you've gotta make a decision on somebody. Let the citizens make that election decision and let them choose the person for the next two years. So yes, you did hear me correctly, but not reelection, 'cause I didn't run for this position two years ago.
Thank you.
Okay, well, you know, as you know, um, sitting in this seat up here, uh, we must, uh, often render, um, decisions regarding the implementations, uh, implementation of policies and procedures that, um, may be somewhat controversial. You've been there with us with that. Are, are you willing to take on that responsibility? If you are, um, appointed to the, to this position, to make sure that those decisions are made in the best interest of the public, even though it might be controversial?
Absolutely. And, and as you know, like you've mentioned it, yes, um, that, as you, as we all know, when you're, when you're in the spot, that comes up and it's sometimes uncomfortable. And it changes your life. I mean, we've all been there, I've had that. I had people who, within, you know, a meeting or two, they were great friends with you and they wanted to have dinner with you to, you're evil and you're a bad person. But ultimately, part of your question was, but you're doing it for the betterment of the community. And I, I'm willing to do that. And I know, it's, it's, as you guys all know, I, um, three of you have had an opportunity to serve with me and I, I know how it is, but I believe that good dialogue is, um, important and it helps a team become successful. I know sometimes the outward appearances, if you're all just rubber stamping and going along with something, that's good teamwork. But I really believe if you want to be successful, a successful business, a successful basketball, football team, they want to get better. And by having everybody's input, that's important. I also understand the respect of that, everybody does have their opinion. And, uh, so yes, I do completely understand what it takes. And that's, I guess, one of the things that I would say is a selling point is to me, the integrity of the process is more important than whether or not you're gonna lose friends. And I, I, we all lose sleep sometimes after meetings, but one thing I always felt is I could lose sleep, maybe stressed about what took place at the meeting, but I never had to lose sleep 'cause I felt like I did something wrong to make personal gain over what was best for the community.
Thank you.
If you could make one change or improvement that would, what would that change or improvement be?
Is that specific to the city?
That's what we believe, it's just, uh.
Just in, in.
In general.
Sitting here on council, um, what you know, um, is going on in the community right now? Or having to do with the council's work? Is there something that's on your heart that you would want to make changes to?
Yes, and that's a great question, because it, and it's been important to me, is when I left council, it was one of my, my thoughts of, uh, I would like to eventually see our community, whether people want to admit it or not, or if it's silent or vocal, that, there's a lot of divisions in the community. Some of that is by social class, some of that is by, by groups. As a community, that's what I like to see be gone, is where we can be receptive, um, to that and build in. I, I remember a time I had, uh, I had been years back, serving as a council member, actually, at one of the BRICS.
Back to the BRICS?
Back to the BRICS, I was just drawing a blank on that, but, um, and I actually was bringing in a couple of people that were looking at investing a smaller machu- manufacturing company into our town. And, uh, I made the mistake of taking them into an establishment and a few people that do have those divisions were very, very vocal, very aggressive towards me, didn't know who they were. And those people left saying, this doesn't look like where we want to do business. And it's not just that, it's the people that are walking on the street, the people that, um, are uncomfortable maybe to go places or to associate in groups because of that division. And again, I, I think that it's there. It, it's easy to say, well, it's silent, there isn't there, but if we really looked at it and everybody took a very unbiased look, there is some divisions. That's one thing that I would love to see this community. I was a, a kid growing up and that's one thing that we actually, I heard a lot of as a council member. I still hear that and that would be something that I'd see as a community, that would be a great change that could happen toward the future.
The next question, Art, uh, do, is related to conflict of interest. And do you have any interest in or participate in any professional or personal activity that could lead to or be perceived as a conflict of interest if you become appointed? If yes, please explain.
And I did put a little of this in the, the application, but because I do have a business and this has happened on the border review, or actually at a council meeting before, if I have a client that, um, is coming before council that I do their financial investments for, that would definitely be with something that I would want to expose as a conflict of interest. Same as a family, if there was something in a, we've had, uh, family members come to the border review and I just remove myself from that discussion because of the appearance. Of course, you, you know me, I was the obsessive one on, on that concept of trying to do things the right way. So I do believe anytime there's a appearance of it. And even, uh, I think if you remember, sometimes I'd even ask you ahead of time, if you feel there is one, I'd step aside on that vote. So other than that, I don't see any other times that would come up, unless it happened to do something with, with the business relationships or a personal relationship like that.
Thank you. Okay, and you've already spoken to this, um, somewhat, but, um, if this gives you another opportunity to tell us about any other activities, specialized skills, knowledge or professional experience that would contribute to your effectiveness in serving on city council?
I would, the funny thing is, and thank you by the way, the packet went out that showed the agenda for tonight. And I was noticing whoever gets elected tonight is sitting right in that chair. And they, all of a sudden, life changes for anybody that's sitting in the crowd. It's sometimes easy, but when you're on that side, it's a little more difficult than it, than it looks. That might be one of the best examples of looking at the agenda tonight of, this is a unique thing. I know, I remember this application form, you're probably not used to somebody that's served that role already, applying for it. But I would say just the fact of the sixteen years of serving on the city council definitely puts, um, me able to sit like tonight, when you look at the agenda of, uh, I F T for a company, a nice, large one for the community, of knowing what that is, to understand the background of those. To also understand what a special assessment is on an alley of not, not, you know, some people having to step in today, they have no idea really what all that means and what's the process. We have some agreements, I noticed one, ones, one that I, we were involved with I T, with their contract coming up. Ironically, I remember a lot from, from that history. So the fact of serving on this, absolutely puts it in to where, just from being there. I always, I probably referred this to you before, some of you on council, it's like that quarterback, that veteran quarterback who's, um, who's been experiencing the blitz, the defense, that pressure coming at him fast, like Peyton Manning, might be able to handle a little better than that, that brand-new quarterback who's, uh, never been there before. And then you're put in that situation. So I would feel from that experience of being on city council, interesting enough, it's funny how people don't know. I still get calls from people, um, thinking I'm on council still. So they'll call with a concern or, hey, there's a vote coming up. And, uh, so there's still that perception of, you know, being in that spot. So outside of that, I still serve on the border review committee for the city of Cadillac. I do not want that in any means to be a, a reason for you saying not. I did serve as a city council member on the border review and now I'm serving in the, the third ward, counts, excuse me, the third ward, I'm serving as their representative. And so, um, if, if I'm selected, you would, either I know that council member Wolfisle was the representative from the city and I'd be willing through the July border review of serving still on the border review, so it's not in a negative way impacting the border review committee. So outside of the city council experience, um, I've stayed here and I'm still living in this community. And so knowing what's been going on and knowing the people and all of that, I s- I feel that as well helps be able to serve on day one, minute one, actually, once you're sworn in, be able to serve in this meeting and have somewhat of an idea. Not that any of us will know exactly, 'cause we haven't been part of it. I also noticed a closed session tonight. Many, I can't even count how many closed sessions I've been through, how many union contracts. I know it is involving a union contract, that's a big deal for the employees. And, um, I feel that I could come in and help over that experience over those next months in issues like that and be ready. I think of, uh, an example of council member Minehart, um, he was not appointed at, for this position and then about two months later ran for council and won. That was an opportunity where the, the, the voter says this is who we want. And, but it takes a lot of training and time spent by staff to have somebody for a few months when then all of a sudden you could have somebody else in a few months later trying to take this position. So probably a long answer to a shorter question, but yes, I feel that experience from being in this, sitting in that exact seat for sixteen years helps me prepare to do it.
Okay, um, the next question that I have for you has to do with the fact that it was just one and a half years ago that the voters, um, filled that seat. And so my question for you is, why should we appoint you to a council seat that you didn't seek in the last election? And what's changed since then? You've kind of already answered your plan.
I did, and thank you.
But is there anything else that you would like to add?
I just, you know, I still live in Cadillac, Cadillac's a beautiful community. To me, seeing how it goes forward in a, in a good process, to me, is, is what it's about. You're right, I didn't. As a matter of fact, that was, uh, and I thought the newspaper did a nice job summarizing that, the article, that explained that. I did not run for reelection. But I'm also tonight telling you my intentions are not to run for the city's council spot in November. But I see a way to come in and help fill a need of this community for a short term. And because I do have a love for the community of saying, hey, we have an opportunity to let the November election, let the voters make that decision, let somebody come in with some experience and, uh, that's the main reason why. It's not to me, and I, I appreciate your question because, you know, just 'cause someone applies for appointment today doesn't mean they're gonna apply for an election, 'cause it's two totally different things. Some people do not feel like they want to go through an election, 'cause it's a totally different process than being elected by council members. So, um, it does make a difference. I don't intend to do that, um, which would have made it a unique question, well, why didn't you run? Again, if you're planning on running in November. I just want to fill that void and hopefully I can do it for that short period up until November.
Okay, thank you.
The last question is related to teamwork. Do you think teamwork is important on a group like this? And if so, how would you contribute to the overall quality of the team?
The great question, and that's exactly, I kinda touched upon it in another question that was asked. I do think teamwork, um, matter of fact, you guys probably more than once rolled your eyes at me bringing up team and talking about relating it to sports or businesses, but I truly believe that teamwork is essential on all levels. Sometimes that means representing the city against another topic. Maybe it's another governmental unit, maybe it's sitting on a committee or representing us. Boundary Commission, for example, where you have to be a teammate and represent our community. Other times, it's looking and saying, um, this is what I feel is best for our community. And, and, uh, council member Spelman, great question, because I really sometimes feel that can get over, uh, oversighted that sometimes people, and I think I've referenced this before. When I first started on city council in two thousand, we were known as the, the, um, the rubber stamping group. All they do is rubber stamp, rubber stamp, rubber stamp. We, there was no, no real lot of debating and such and people looked at that as not a healthy thing. At the other end, sometimes, as we know, there would be a, there would be very controversial meetings, a lot of debate, um, a lot of tension. But at the end of the day, I truly believe teamwork, um, it, it means everybody respecting everybody's opinion and looking out and if somebody really feels they have something to contribute to the team, that's important. And I know I, I would not get an award for always being the, let's all vote on this together as a five-member board. But sometimes you, you think that you're making progress or you're getting more success by bringing out questions and addressing. But sometimes you, you think that you're making progress or you're getting more success by bringing out questions and addressing issues. And then also, this is a unique thing, because we're a team of the city, but we're also a team of representing the people we, we represent. And so by, we work for the citizens and then have to work as a unit, as a council, as another team. Then we have that relationship of council working with staff, and how do you not, how do you affect that team? So I, I do believe it's important. And as you know, that's my style of wanting to address items about making it more successful. And sometimes it wasn't the same answer that everybody wanted, but when we can, I think back to some of our debating where we came up with something really solid, because we did have that discussion. We had that, that debate. To me, that's when a team goes at the best. And I also believe a team, it's when things are the downstage, when things are not going well, that's when you really test the integrity of a team, is how do they respond and how do they react?
Thank you. Is there any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I know who's next. Well, because somebody said I'm four.
Jason was four, so it's got to be Evan.
Because I'm psychic.
I know who's after.
Right there, and if you would just introduce yourself to everyone?
Well, for those who don't know me, I'm Evan Smith, I live in 413 Prospect Street. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for being here. So we have, so we have our array of questions that we're gonna-
Go for it.
Okay, we'll start with council member Spelman.
Yes, we will. A lot of these are the questions that you answered on your application, so be prepared to be a little-
You're gonna check, see if I remember what I put down.
There you go. The city council regularly meets at 6:00 PM on the first and third Mondays of each month. The, the meetings last from one to three hours. Will your schedule permit your regular attendance at scheduled meetings? Do you envision any problems such as work-related matters that would prevent you from attending on a regular basis?
I am happily retired, and I don't see any, any, anything that will interfere.
Nice. Okay, so my question is, does your interest in serving the city council stem from a personal interest or goal? And is there something in particular you hope to accomplish while serving the city council? Also, why is serving on the city council important to you? Please elaborate.
Well, you might remember TDI, that I ran for this position before. And I've always been very active in community service. Is there anything, you had multiple parts there, is there anything, yes, I would like to continue to be part of a group that continues to improve our relationships with our townships and with our county. I would also like to see that we become greener as a city, as far as trees and stuff like that. And I've talked to Marcus, Marcus about that before, and when I was running for office the first time. And just, it's been something that I've always wanted to do, never been able to do it on, you know, I've run for, I've worked on people's elections and helped them get elected, and I've never done it myself. And as a government teacher of thirty-some years, I thought that you should probably practice what you preach. And I want to practice, and I'd like to sit in that chair and see how well I can do.
All right, so the city council has to render decisions about policies and procedures that sometimes are controversial. Are you willing to take on the responsibility of making those decisions that are in the best interest of the public, even when they may be very controversial?
Absolutely. Then I hope we have opportunities where we can communicate with our constituents, let them know why we made that decision. And that's where the transparency, you guys have been doing such a good job over the last couple of years, been doing. So I'm more than able to.
If you could make one change or improvement, what would that change or improvement be? Through the city.
Through the city?
It could have, it could have something to do with things that are going on in the community that we might have overarching ability to help, or even something here at the city itself.
We have several homes that have been left vacant for years. And matter of fact, just around the corner from my house on Prospect, we have a house that was caught on fire probably twenty-plus years ago. And the boarded-up windows, now the boards are starting to fall off. I would like to see us clean that up. Then every time we take a tree down, I'd like to see the city put two trees in the ground. Those are two things that are important to me. Then another thing that's important, I believe, are emergency services. We have great employees in all our departments, but in emergency services, as you've seen on my application, I have a real soft spot about those people that are in service and emergency services. We need to see that they have the best training and the best equipment that money can buy. That's a good question.
That's a good answer.
Well, thank you.
Do you have any interest in or participate in any professional or personal activity that could lead to or be perceived as a conflict of interests if you become appointed, that you're aware of? And if so, please explain.
Not that I'm aware of, and actually I could do even better than that, no, I don't.
Good answer.
It was the right answer, right?
Yes, I have a lot of conflicts of interest, whatever.
No, I know what you're asking, and I can't, I can't think of anything.
So are there any other activities, specialized skills, knowledge, or professional experience that would contribute to your effectiveness in serving on city council?
When I started in public service at age twenty, I've always worked a part of a team, so I know how to work with teams. Mission-oriented, and I believe after all these years, I've learned how to listen and how to talk to people and communicate with people, but primarily to listen to people first.
Okay, this seat was open a year and a half ago, and the voters decided who would sit in the seat. So could you explain to us why we should appoint you to this council seat that you didn't seek in the, in the last election? What's, and what's changed since that time that makes you available for the seat?
Good question. Well, the reason I did not run was that at that time, I, Ruth and I were, my wife and I were living in Belton, Michigan for a short-term pastoral position. And then we moved back here just a year ago, a year and a half ago. So I'm back in my town, a home that we've had for twenty-nine years. So I probably would have given Matt a good run for his money, but it's a big shoes to fill. I know he, I mean, my shoe's a little bit bigger than his, but he's a great person, I've known him for twenty-nine years. So what was the other question?
Just what's changed since-
Oh, what's changed, I moved back into town, yeah. You know, and I just feel that it's time to get back in the, into the city and give back to the city.
Okay, thank you.
Evan, you already talked a little bit about teamwork, but that's my final question, is do you think teamwork is important on the city council? And if so, how would you contribute to the overall effectiveness of the team?
Absolutely, it's important. It's the strength of any group, is the work as a team. We have to individually vote, and we'd be able to defend our vote, but I would also like to think that I, we'd be able to communicate with each other, talk with each other, come to a consensus. That's what I mean, is working as a team, and I think I, I do pretty well consensus-building.
Thank you.
That's a tough question, Sherri, I appreciate that.
It requires a little bit of thought.
Yeah.
Because we do all have individual votes.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, and you're very individual people.
We are. Okay, is there anything else? Okay.
Really?
Thank you, that's it.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for being willing to serve.
Thank you.
Who do you think's up next, JI?
I have no idea. I can tell he's a dad, able to sit on the floor.
Hello, would you like to introduce yourself to everyone?
My name's Jason Hoffman.
Okay, we're gonna just get started with our array of questions for, help guide the interview.
Jason, some of these are questions that you've already responded to on your application, but just bear with us, give us the answer again for the general public. The city council regularly meets at six o'clock on the first and third Mondays of each month, 6:00 PM. The meetings last approximately one to three hours. Will your schedule permit your regular attendance at the scheduled meetings? And do you envision any problems such as work-related issues that would prevent you from attending on a regular basis?
No, I'm self-employed, I have employees to run my company, so I can come and go as I need.
I can't write this, pissed as heck. Okay, hi.
Hello.
Thanks for coming. Does your interest in serving on the city council stem from a personal interest or goal? And is there something in particular you hope to accomplish while serving on city council? And why is serving on council important to you?
For the good of the city, just to help as a team and to help on the third ward. I've lived in the third ward for about seventeen, eighteen years now, so just to be part of what the city does and to be a positive input and help the city move forward.
Thank you. The city council has to render decisions as it relates to the implementation of policies and procedures, and sometimes those can be somewhat controversial. Are you comfortable taking on the responsibility of making those decisions that are in the best interest of the people overall, but can be very controversial?
Yeah, I, I've been self-employed since, honestly, since I was sixteen years old. My, I was with my parents' company, I've always been in a point of authoritative. I've had several different companies, so decision-making and doing the hard decision is something I've done for many, many years.
If you could make one change or improvement that would, what would that change or improvement be? And we're talking in general of, it could be over the city or things in the area, or what the council would-
Have an effect on.
Effect on.
I'll be honest, that's a tough question for me to answer, I probably don't know a lot of the struggles maybe as well as others do from my seat at home or work, where I see probably one of the biggest things today that I would see is to mend some of the relationships between the city and the county and just to get everybody into unity and things moving on a forward path of good progression.
Good.
Thank you.
Jason, do you have any conflict-